Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest. I'd like to call to order the meeting with Brooklyn Select Board for May 6, 2020. The time is 6:31. And first up is review changes to the agenda if any. The only thing that I wanted to add was I thought we would slide in as E under Old Business, just as a place to put it, a little discussion about recycling that can kind of dovetail into Guy's summary. Anything Gwen that you wanted to change about the agenda?
No.
Shelby, anything you wanted to change about the agenda? Joseph, any changes for you?
No.
Okay. All right. Moving on to scheduled members of the public, there are none unscheduled members of the public, there's no one here in person and there's no one online, which moves us on to approving the minutes from April 15. On the first page, Joseph is not included as being online, we'll add him in there. Also, I noticed under the papoose-laying dog situation, in the very last sentence, it says that something about the dog running loose and it should be loose. Other than that, I didn't have any other changes on page one. Gwen, did you have any changes other than those on page one?
No.
Shelby, any other changes on page one?
Um, I think, yeah. Hold on.
Good luck with Shelby.
Well, I'm not quiet ever, so.
Hi Bruce.
I work the hard way.
Okay, hold on, sorry.
It's all right.
It might not be page one, but I heard it now, hope I got what I needed. Um, it seemed like to me it read that it was saying that the guns on Easter were related to the speeding. And that wasn't how I remembered the conversation. I felt like the guns on Easter were one situation, the speeding another. I don't remember there being a reference to us thinking that the speeding people were the ones firing the guns. I definitely don't think they were, I think the guns were... Never.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I recall that either actually, now that I'm looking at it. It says that Guy, that you suggested that drivers had been shooting from their cars?
No.
I don't think you said that.
No.
I'm gonna suggest, yeah, I'm gonna suggest that we just, we just strike the whole end of that saying suggested to the end of that. I mean, you did note that there was gunshots. But I don't think we, yeah.
No.
No, that's, that was.
It sounded a lot more exciting.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. Joseph, any changes for you on page one?
Nothing, it hasn't been mentioned.
Okay. Bruce, how about you? Any changes on page one? We've already discussed that and Joseph. Okay. How about on page two? The only thing I had was down under the summary, under Guy's report. He said that the dog licenses were being shifted to May 31st to eliminate late charges, not March 31st. So we'll make that change. Gwen, do you have any other changes on?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, what was that?
About the license, it said that you reported that licenses were due April 1st. And while this is being shifted to May 31st to eliminate late charges.
Right, what I did is I moved them to March 31st. Everybody assigned it at March 31st.
Oh.
So that they will not have to pay a late fee.
Okay, so March 31st is correct then?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I guess I unders... Well, I don't think that.
We have late fees and we have a penalty.
Yeah, I think the way he describes it is misleading though, so we probably want to say that it, the licenses were due April 1st and while registrations received after that will be dated March 31st?
Yes.
Okay.
Have been dated.
Right. Okay.
I'll fix that.
Shelby, any changes on page two? Joseph, any changes on page two?
No.
Bruce, anything on page two?
No.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the April 15 meeting as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce?
Good luck with your interview.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes from April 15 as amended signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, those are approved. Then we're moving on to the one item of new business, which is the LEMP re-adoption. So hopefully everybody got the electronic copy of the updated LEMP that I sent around yesterday, maybe something like that.
Couple of days ago.
Couple of days ago. So I've already run this, just so you know, I've already run this by Alyssa Sabetto at the Wyndham Regional Commission. She thought everything looked good. The only thing that I changed is I updated a variety of contact information, like I removed Mike Wynott who was in here, I added Archie, I made some updates to phone numbers for a few people. I correct, I changed the sheriff to be Mark Anderson now rather than whoever the guy was who used to be the sheriff, his name escapes me at the moment. So there was nothing of substance really that was changed as far as any verbiage other than at Alyssa's suggestion, I did note that we do have a grade. And that it is, it does qualify as a NIMs resource class three. So I indicated that on the table of resources that's on page three. So those were the only changes that were made. I guess just to get us to a point of discussion at least, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the and adopt the updated local emergency management plan as presented. Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Seceded by Gwen. I guess then for discussion, Gwen, do you have any questions about anything in the LEMP?
You explained it well, no.
Okay. Shelby, do you have any questions about anything in the LEMP?
No.
Joseph, any questions about anything in it?
No.
Bruce, any questions about anything in it?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. All right, then let's take it to a vote. Then all those in favor of approving and adopting the updated local emergency management plan signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? What did she say? Oh. Any extensions? Sorry. Okay, so that is approved. So I will send this along with the adoption form to Alyssa tomorrow and we should be back in compliance, which would be good. Okay. Then moving on to old business. First up, traffic speed issues. I think we just kind of wanted to have a bit of a touch base on this to see if anything new had surfaced or, and I guess I'll start by asking, Guy, did you have a chance to reach out?
I left two email messages with Lieutenant French and I haven't had a response yet. But I did see the state police in town again and I did also see the sheriff in town. I think they may have been on different missions, but there is a view of the state police and the sheriffs in the town. So that itself should create a little second thought about doing something.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be helpful. Joseph, have you had any more feedback or heard anything more or had any more experiences yourself just in the last few weeks as far as any of this was concerned?
Uh, well, I guess I would just say that I have seen the cops, the state police and the sheriffs in the town a huge amount over the, since our last meeting, like it's gotta be like a dozen times between both of them. I know that there was a couple arrests up on Merrill Drive and I'm not sure if the arrests were associated with the people who were driving fast or if just the increase in police presence has slowed people down, but I haven't seen people driving. I mean, people still go fast, but I haven't seen reckless driving. So I guess that's really the only thing that I've noticed is an excellent improvement.
Well, that's positive. I mean, I mean, I think Guy's right and you're right that I can imagine that just an increased presence of them is bound to scare people from doing it.
So apparently the extra phone calls did make a difference.
Yeah, maybe in combination like, like you guys say, possibly with them being here for other reasons, which may not be related to speeding for all we know, suppose, but in any event, if it's better, it's better and that's good.
The only thing that's like, that's, I don't think, I don't think we're part of reaction currently, but just worth noting is that what we've all pointed out is, is that police presence in one way or another has really solved our problem and I don't believe anyone's been, you know, I haven't seen anyone or heard of anyone ticketed. So I guess it's just worth realizing after this whole craziness ends, if we still have a problem with people speeding around town, that having cops in the town does make a pretty big difference.
Yeah. Well, and which, which honestly was part of the reason, I mean, a large part of the reason that we used to contract with the sheriff and then later with state police in order to try to halve that presence. And it's, you know, again, I guess it's again worth noting that it wasn't, wasn't for our lack of wanting to continue to do that, it was that neither of them would offer us a contract to do that anymore because of their staffing problems. Perhaps in the future that would be different and then maybe it's something we can look at, re-engaging one of them on one suite.
There was, I wanted to add into the mix, there was someone that was selling cars online. And I'm not sure where, but it's in the area there and he would take the cars and test them going up and down the road from what I've understood. So I don't know if that person has stopped selling those cars or if some of the police action has something to do with that. So that's just another thing that could have created the problem along Grassbrook Road right by, in front of Joseph's house.
Okay. Joseph, any other thoughts on this at the moment?
Uh, not currently.
Shelby, how about you? Any, anything you wanted to mention or bring up about this at the moment?
Yeah, I could actually have been thinking about the idea of a constable. And I know that you have to be trained and stuff and it's the first time they're undergoing training. I know there's like hoops and jumps and we elect our every year, so there's no real incentive for people to put in effort. But I was just thinking that we're probably not the only small town in this area that has the same issue with having a dedicated police presence. That actually their priority is that area. So I just in the back of my head was kind of thinking about whether it would be possible ever to kind of, in conjunction with another town, all elect somebody, you know, the same person who can police that, you know, however many towns and be the, the, the presence that's dedicated. I mean, it's not really a full-time job, so it wouldn't be, you know, it would have to be the right person, but I was just trying to think about, you know, law enforcement and what all of the options we do have are just total and even though there are much more restrictions on who can actually have police, you know, law enforcement authority and what they have to do to be able to keep that authority, we do have the option of having a constable, just like all the towns do. So anyway. Just sort of a, this is me on a podcast, I went off remembering aside, huh? So not a short-term solution by any means and probably not cost-effective because of the amount of training that we would have to help maybe us, we support someone and not helping to do. But just something to think about and probably help dealing with a town that has this issue. And, yeah.
Okay. Bruce, how about you? Any thoughts or comments on the situation, traffic situation?
I'm listening pretty intelligently, I'm fine.
You don't want to be constable?
I was just, I was, can I make a nomination? I wanted to like nominate Shelby Brummer as our individual. No, we're not good, you started it.
Can I say, can I say, thank you, Rick Lynn?
Yeah.
Um, I think I mentioned this last time and I don't want it to take up too much time now, but the sheriff did mention to me that after this whole COVID-19 thing kind of comes down, he is interested in getting surrounding towns to work together to kind of share the cost of, of a deputy that would be kind of committed to those towns and I definitely think that's something that we should, we should be involved in the discussion when it does arise, because it could be something that would work well for us.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be interesting to know what that might look like from their standpoint and what other towns and how the breakdown of it and time and cost and how that would all shake out. But yeah, no, it's an interesting idea. I agree. Okay. Moving on to 7B, financial slash tax status. I guess from my standpoint, I'll say, you know, I've had some further conversations with Sarah over the last few weeks. Basically, nothing more at this point from her side is known as far as, you know, what kind of situation we might be in, of course, until May 15th has come and gone, I don't think any of us really, you know, nobody really knows what might remain unpaid as far as taxes are concerned. Guy, have you?
I've seen, tax payments have been trickling in and today or yesterday, today, Sarah's had Julie send out a, a listserv blast, you know, reminding people of the tax due on May 15th. So as you say, it'll all see how it works at the end of the day when the taxes are due. And, you know, we've always been a little understanding and we give two or three days. So, you know, right now it seems to be okay. And financially, we are in good shape because we have stopped doing other things. So we're in good shape, but it would be really nice to see everybody have their taxes paid by the 15th of May.
That would.
I'll add that on the, our meeting, our next meeting is May 20th. Sarah will be joining us for that meeting and I'm also, I haven't gotten confirmation yet, but I'm trying to get Samara to join us as well, just for some historical perspective and more of an accounting understanding than, than certainly any, anybody has at the moment. So the plan is to have both of them on so that we can discuss whatever the situation is at that point and see what we may or may not have to do.
Yeah, because the tax state this year is, I'm not sure how it's going to play out because we don't even have an approved school district.
Right.
Budget, so all that has to go into the hopper for us to generate a tax rate for next season.
Right. Gwen, did you have any other, any other thoughts or?
No.
On it at the moment? Shelby, how about you?
Shelby?
You're still muted Shelby, in case you.
Shelby, you got insulted when I answered.
Star-sighted.
Okay.
She could be off warning.
We'll move along to Joseph. Do you have any further thoughts on the financial situation at the moment?
Uh, no, nothing to add.
Bruce, how about you?
Yeah, I have one thing, I haven't been paying too much attention lately, I'm pretty busy. I was wondering if there's any talk about what's going on with the schools, if they're having a budget need or not even being mentioned or anybody had any information on it?
Guy, do you want to share?
The next scheduled, the budget vote has now been rescheduled for the third time for June 10th and the information meeting is on the 9th. The information meeting will be held at the Leland and Gray Auditorium or library, I'm not sure. And as far as the voting, I'm still waiting for the directive from Governor Scott to see if he lifts the stay-at-home ban for May 15th. So there's a couple of things, it is an Australian ballot and right now the voting is on, but we're trying to figure out the logistics of how we can have people come in, vote and stay safe. So stay tuned.
Yeah, okay. Just in the air, okay.
The, on our website is the warning, on the bottom, lower bottom right side, all the way down is the warning, so if you want to review that warning again, you may.
Okay, thanks.
Shelby, just circling back to you, did you have any other comments or thoughts on the financial situation at the moment?
No, just, I mean, I think the news watch already.
Okay. All right, moving on to 7C, Suzie's Little Peanuts update. Bruce, what's, what's going on?
Let me see, first off, I got a, I got an email today from, from Olivia that because of the July 1st comp, mandatory composting, she wanted to go off the town, would be interested in going out with them and putting a community composter like in between the church and the school. And they're in discussion, she's in discussions with wisdom solid ways about best ways forward to go about it. And I didn't respond back to her yet for obvious reasons, because we were talking tonight and I just wanted to get everybody's thoughts on that before saying anything to her.
I mean, I'll say, my first reaction is that I, I think their compost requirements should be their compost requirements and I don't particularly think it makes sense for the town to enter into that with them. But that's just my initial feeling. Gwen?
What else, stick to your opinion, I got mine.
Yeah, hang on a second.
My opinion is we, I agree with Dave's comment first and second, we are having enough trouble keeping the area around the dumpster clean. How in the world are we going to keep a compost area clean and the bears out? I, I don't think that's something the town is necessarily going to need to take on.
Shelby, what are your thoughts?
Um, I think that because they're tenants, I think that we should just be really deliberate about whether or not we do it with them, because I think it sort of depends on whether or not we want it to be something that's included in as a service for them as the tenant or something that they're responsible for. I think that, like, I think already like would be, is it the, the phone or something or the fire alarm, like how that one building has to be split? I just think it makes it a lot less clear if we're sharing things. I think it's either their responsibility or our responsibility for the building.
Oh, Shelby, they don't want to share the cost, but go ahead, keep going.
But even that, I think it's just easier if it's either them or us.
Yeah. Joseph, what are your thoughts?
I kind of agree with Shelby and I think it would get complicated and have the potential for conflict in the future, trying to like divvy up who pays what portion and whose responsibility this and that is, so.
So Bruce, what are, what are your thoughts on it?
Okay, I will pull your input, I really did. But I especially like Gwen's because I got a real bad thing about this dumpster, which I wasn't on the phone line in order to get into change of adding to something to the agenda, but I really like to talk about that dumpster.
We've added it, we've added at the end of Old Business, we'll talk about it.
Okay, so that being said, I totally agree with what everybody's saying, but even more so with Gwen, just because, and Shelby and Joseph were good in that they threw up the idea, look, you know, we're already having issues with sitting on the phone and doing this and doing that. They want to do composting, they got to do composting, that's our problem, their problem. We don't need to split that with the town. We have our own issue with that damn dumpster, that's enough. So I'm going to give it to the rest of you.
Okay. So you're fine to go back to them and just say, you know, it's, you know, I mean, I think we're, we're supportive, we're supportive of them doing it, certainly, and that, you know, they should, they should try to do what they can do to compost, but you know, beyond that, it's.
We don't have to do that, you have some other things to.
Okay, shoot.
Not much. Okay, that was a long one. Now, last time you said you talked to Gary O'Vorney about doing the wood chips. Would he do the sand too, Dave, if we had sand at the same time?
Yeah, sand to do what with?
Well, this underneath the, in the center of the play area, I believe is where, underneath the playground, I believe, I looked at it three weeks ago, in the main area, they need sand. I talked about it a little bit and then I actually looked at it twice and my determination was this. Wood chips are great, but there's a spot that needs sand. I've procured, I've procured sand, I can get screen sand from Howard and Oscar, Howard and Oscar's very much, get loads, he'll bring a load over there to solve the sand issue underneath the swings and stuff over there. But there's, but the wood chips, you already know about, and I've already gotten Thomas to, to say he would do that and I have to reevaluate whether it's going to be one or two loads, but I'm into the, I'm into the two loads probably, because I don't want to keep doing it again and again and again. So do the nice thick load, fluff it up, how did I say? Couple years, we fluff it up, but this repetition probably will end there too. So.
So yeah, Gary will definitely help us, we just, you know, we need to know when we're going to have the material and I'll schedule it with him for Saturday sometime and, you know, you and me and I think we can probably get him on. Yeah, so, so one question I have though, Bruce, is about the sand. So is the, because you, so the purpose of the wood chips is, well, the insurance requirement and the safety requirement is that you need to have some kind of padded landing area for the kids underneath all of the equipment and a certain amount of space around the perimeter of the equipment. You usually can do that either by putting down sand or by putting down wood chips. Do we, but is, do we really need to do sand and wood chips in some places?
That's the way she has it there now. And she was good with doing all wood chips. Quite honestly, because I was looking at it, impact resistant, you know, if you want to take a look around with me, I'm good, I'm good with that and everything's open for discussion. But let's just say this, I can discuss it more with her and see what she thinks as far as the regulations that she has to keep. And going forward, we can just decide.
No, I mean, that's, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I'm sure from Gary's standpoint, he'll bring his tractor and we can move whatever we have to move, it doesn't really, that isn't really going to matter. It's just that, you know, when you put, the thing is when you put sand down, when you put sand down, pretty quickly that sand becomes compacted and no longer is a soft surface. Wood chips are, wood chips go a little bit longer before they become a hard surface, so you have to periodically scrape up that sand to fluff it back up again. But maybe they're already doing it. Maybe they're already doing it.
What are you talking about with Olivia? I'll, I'll.
I mean, we can do it either way. What I'll say is. I mean, we can do it either way. What I'll say is, what I will say is, a couple of years ago, when we did this, we did not use any sand. We used all woodchips.
Yeah, woodchips and woodchips, okay. And if she really wanted it, she would have bitched, no doubt about it. Excuse the expression.
Yeah. I mean, my bet is, and there were, and I think I brought this up last time. There is underneath those woodchips, a bunch of sand, which could be
Oh, kidding.
dragged and raked and softened up. But the problem is, it just gets hard again, which is why Wade, Wade, the insurance guy, I think...
It's probably actually better to have, unless you went on a beach. But even beaches, they have to, they rake them.
Yeah, exactly. It, it becomes hard really fast. But anyway, yeah, talk about it with Olivia. And I mean, it's, we can do whatever you guys think makes sense.
Whatever. Okay, so what I'll do is, I'll talk to Olivia, reach out to you, and look at it. Because she says she's okay with all woodchips, but she mentioned sand. So I'll just clear it with her that we're just gonna go ahead with all the woodchips. But we're gonna go with a shot at it. I'm not just gonna give her a little skip log. We'll make sure she's got substantial amount there. And the point that you made last time, Dave, is that, um, yeah, those woodchips, they're pretty easy to fluff up and fluff them up ready to go out on a say. You're good for that here. And it's certainly gonna be a lot easier to fluff that up than compacted sand.
Yeah, right, right. So yeah, once, once we know when the chips are gonna be there, then we can make a plan with Gary to move them and spread them and stuff. And it doesn't take very long. I mean, Gary and Mark and I did it in like, an hour and a half last time we did it, I think. It's fast.
Good. Alright, I'll, I'll let you know. I'm gonna get right on it. I'll give her the, the information, the, the answer about the, uh, community composting. And then I'll, um, talk to her about that and get back to you right away. Lastly, um, I just want to give you an update on the budget. I think we're a little, I'm not sure, 100% sure. But from what Sarah gave me, uh, the early part of March, we should be costing over $16,000 now in our budget. So that's that. I just wanted to keep you guys an update and, uh, I guess that's it.
Okay. Great. Thank you for all that.
Sure.
Uh, okay, moving on to 7D, the census. Um, Joseph, I know, um, I mean, I think it was your idea to add it. Um, I'll say, I personally have completed my census.
I have.
Um,
We have.
Guy and Gwen have. Hopefully, everyone else has. Uh, Joseph, were there, were there things in particular you wanted to say about it other than encouraging everyone to hopefully do it online?
Well, that, that's the main thing, is just trying to get people to, uh, respond to it. And actually, since we're sitting in front of the computers now, I followed the link that, uh, we were sent. Um, and it's actually a little disappointing to look at our data stacked up against the rest of the country. And, uh, it's also disappointing to look at our data as a county and as a town. Um, we only have like 40, as, as a state, we only have 48% self-response rate. And, uh, some states, like Minnesota, is like number one, and they have 67% response rate.
Show-offs.
So we gotta do better. And Brookline, Brookline only has like 45% response rate.
So one, yeah. One thing I'll, I'll mention, and I mean, maybe this is just me, I'll, I'll be honest, that other than the person who came here to discuss the census with us, I'll say personally, I have received no communication. And, you know, I don't subscribe to a paper.
Didn't we get something in the mail?
I just, I just, I think it wouldn't be very difficult for someone in my position to not know that
About the census.
About the census. I, I mean, I, I do wonder what they've done so far for outreach, because I've not seen anything personally.
I have it on the website.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I'm sorry.
And, and we have received one or two voicemails, you know, asking us, you know, what we can do.
Didn't we get something in the mail?
No, that's a survey we did.
Oh, that's a survey we did.
We did, we did that already.
Yeah.
Well, well, yeah, I guess, uh, I would definitely agree with you. I, I think that, um, it's not like we got billboards on the side of the road saying due to census. But, um, you know, I, I think we've all received, uh, stuff now, and everybody...
I haven't.
You haven't received anything?
No, I've not received anything.
Wow.
You still? Really?
No, no, a single thing. What I will say, and I don't know if this is...
Exactly, because your mail is your whole package.
Well, exactly. And I do think that that's, and I think that could play into some things. It's that, the way I understood his description, we don't get mail at our physical address. We have a P.O. box.
Oh.
So I do think that that's a later, their design, and I think this is a huge flaw, is that they're, that ultimately, I think they would probably be sending someone to my house.
Oh.
Um, which, you know.
Because I think when they, I think...
Anyway, so I don't know whether that plays into it or not.
I think when they did it 10 years ago, we had a post office box and somebody did come to our house.
Yes. But the bottom line is that now with this pandemic, that they've, uh,
Yeah.
everybody's put these census on the back burner, you know, people did. But the census people, they're doing everything they can online and, uh, and also in the mail. So the physical thing has not been able to, to happen. So I think once that starts to happen...
Do we, do we have a lot of people that have the listserv? Does a lot of people encounter them?
It's a 110, 20, 125, something like that. I mean, maybe it makes sense, Joseph, would you want to put together an email about the census? And, and to send to Julie, to have her send out to the listserv, encouraging people? Anyone who hasn't to go online to
Yeah, I, I can do that. I think though, just, uh,
Can't hurt.
Like the link that we were just sent, um, with the national data. And, uh, just kind of urge people to complete the census. And, um, I'm not 100% sure, but I, regardless of the coronavirus, I don't think that we've reached the point that they would be knocking on doors yet.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Not at all.
So, I mean, this is, it's not like we failed, um, but, yeah. Uh, I think what we just want is to do what we can to get people to, uh, respond to the census. So yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, get an email together.
Well, and to your point, I mean, we know, because we've, there's recently been a survey that showed us this, that we have a very large percentage of our population that has internet access. So, you know, it would be in everyone's best interests if ultimately, the census didn't have to pay people $17 an hour to go visit houses that could have just done this online in the first place.
Absolutely. And, and, uh, I, I understand things are a little weird with the coronavirus, uh, but I would have expected there's obviously more people standing home than they're, than, why they, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a very good point, yeah.
I have seen a couple commercials regarding it on TV, seeing how important it is to fill it out, but...
Yeah.
Well, I think they, I think they've done a good job as far as, you know, keeping people, uh, informed. But I think people are just putting it on the back burner because they're just, right now, I think they're a little funky.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, anything else? Any other thoughts on that at the moment, Joseph?
No.
Cool. Uh, Gwen, any last thoughts on that? Shelby, any last thoughts on the census? Bruce, anything to add?
Uh, has to be done this year, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, maybe as we can to June, July, uh, seeing Joseph's, or any of us. If we still have old numbers in the town, maybe we should do the sandwich board. Maybe we should, we should just an information. Maybe we should redo the, the Julie thing. And, and tell everybody how important it is for our town to have those, to have that census in. You know, not now, but maybe in a couple of months, maybe hopefully, as this virus, hopefully, will probably will uh, subside a little bit.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, that's something to consider. Um, okay, so now moving on to an item we added, which was, um, 7E, recycling. Um, so, we all saw, um, Guy's email from Monday about, uh, the situation that he encountered at the recycling bins. I guess Guy maybe want to just sort of close the circle on that, about what's gone on since then and...
Uh, yeah, basically, um, I, I try to keep the recycling area clean. And I go there where you can clean up, which is fine. I don't mind doing that. But this past Saturday, when I did it, everything was cleaned up, everything was nice. And there was a gentleman in a black car with Vermont tags. And, uh, he took probably about 20 minutes to empty out his car of all recyclables. And, um, you know, I, I said, uh, well, I guess you don't get to do recycling, uh, what you do once a month. And he said, no, I live in New York, but I have a home up at 113, um, Honey Mountain Road. And, uh, in New York, they, they're not picking up recyclables anymore. And, uh, that's why I'm bringing them here. So I bit my tongue, uh, because I don't have any authority, but I was a little displeased with it. So having said that, uh, the place was all cleaned up. And Monday morning at 6 o'clock, I showed you the photo of what it looked like. You know, people are using our facility more than, it's more than just the people from Brookline, that's for sure. And we are now doing a truck every five days, which is six times a month at $142 a clip. You know, that's a lot of money. Um, I, I don't know. Triple T Trucking, I want to give the, uh, a thank you to them. Because when I did call them at short notice, they had a truck here within four hours. And we cleaned it up again, so everything's back to normal. So it's just a little frustrating. Uh, I realize that the town has, has said that they want to do this. And if everyone looks at their tax bill, you will see how much it costs you for the recycling. Our household, Gwen and I, it costs us $82 a year. Uh, you can look there, and if you divide that by 12, that's $7, $8 a month. Uh, that's certainly reasonable. It's just a little frustrating to see the area just get dumped the way it did like that.
Okay. Um, Gwen, let's just, we'll go, let's just go around and, um, just talk briefly about it. I'll be the last. Gwen, what are your thoughts on, do you think there's something we can or should do at this point to change anything, or what's, what's your feeling?
I mean, we've been discussing this for a year. And Guy worked so hard to keep it clean. If he didn't keep it clean, it would be a lot worse.
Alright, but that's...
But I, I think it's, right now, we pay taxes, we get very little benefits. And I think the recycling bin is a benefit that we don't get anywhere else. We don't get any other kind of benefit for our taxes. So I like the bin, and I think it's a really good benefit. But when it gets to the point where we're paying for everybody else, and now I think there's gonna be a time where we're gonna have to do something, either get rid of it. But right now, I, I, I just don't know. I have very mixed feelings about it. Because I'm afraid if we take the dumpsters away, then that's just gonna be a dumping area. And then we're gonna be paying to have somebody come in and take the garbage out. So I don't know. I don't know.
The $20,000, oh, wait.
Um, alright, hang on a sec, Bruce. Uh, Shelby, Shelby, what are your thoughts on the situation, just in general?
I mean, um, my thoughts are that, I mean, even though it was by a slim margin, it was only two months ago that the town decided they wanted to keep the bins. So I think as frustrating as and emotional as it feels to have somebody coming up here to dump a bunch of trash, he is a homeowner, he pays taxes, um, and they are going to use as well. I think that's just part of the situation, and I, I think it's what we're dealing with now. I also would wonder if some of the increased use is due to the fact that people are home and maybe they're cleaning out a bunch of stuff that happens to be recyclable. They're going through their attics and their basements and their garages. So to keep in mind that it's not necessarily that the increase alone is due to other people coming here. It could just be partially that people are making much more use of it. Or people who typically bring their recycling somewhere else aren't taking the risk of going to bring their recycling there. Um, but I think no matter what, we shouldn't be considering pulling the service at this time. I think it's more important now to have it than usual, um, especially if you have older population. And the last thing I would want is, um, some of our residents who rely on that to maintain social distance as an way of getting rid of the recycling to suddenly have to drive to town and figure out somewhere else to dump it and possibly be taking more risks than they're taking already. Um, so, I don't know. I'm obviously not happy about the money. I'm not happy if other people are confusing the resource that we have for our residents. Um, but I think that, um, it's just kind of is what it is for right now. And hopefully, as people get used to the situation, it'll start to level out the usage and then hopefully return to normal. Um, and also, I'd be happy to stop by, like, make a point of just like driving that way home a couple of times a week. And just to kind of check out the place and see like if, I, I can like definitely pick up trash and add it to my trash. Um, so, because I know it's all kind of falling on Guy, and it's probably gonna, it's obviously worse than it's been. Um, and it may stay that way for a little bit. So I mean, I'm, I'm happy to help pitch in and drive by once or twice a week with my garbage bag and do a little bit of cleanup and just check out and see how it looks and if anyone's there who you don't recognize.
Um, Joseph, what is your thinking about this at the moment?
Well, it's incredibly aggravating that, um, that at least some of the, uh, increased use is, uh, you don't have estate materials. But, uh, as Shelby said, we did have a vote on it. And the people in the town voted to, to keep the service. Uh, I, I think the, the unknown factor being the coronavirus, um, we, we don't make it a health risk to have the dumpster area. It is, uh, it would be a risk to remove the dumpster at this time. So I, I definitely don't think that we should consider removing it now. I think that we should just, uh, continue, continue the service until we get, uh, and if we get, you know, crazy over budget, and then reevaluate, reevaluate it then. Uh, I, I think that the, uh, that this also might raise awareness about the problems associated with this issue. And due to, uh, the, the margins kind of slimming down every year. Next year might be the year that, uh, the townspeople vote to, to remove the, uh, recycling bins. But, um, I would agree that it was only a few months ago that they voted to keep them. I think that's what we gotta do.
Uh, Bruce, what are your, what's your thoughts about this at the moment?
Okay, they're, they're not organized my thoughts. I'll do the best I can. What else is there, Shelby? I, I appreciate what everybody's been saying, but I have some problems with all this. First of all, I have a problem with the $20,000 bucks. And when we get to that point, I want to see stopped. I don't want to go past the $20,000. That's the first thing.
Sorry, Bruce, can I just ask you a question? Bruce, what $20,000 are you talking about?
$20,000, that was, was it $40,000 was approved for the, uh, for the dumpster, for the year?
For the current fiscal year, $18,000 was approved. For the upcoming fiscal year, $22,000 was approved.
I'm sorry, you got, uh, twenty what?
$22,000.
Twenty-two, okay, so...
That's from the next fiscal year, Bruce.
I would personally like to know, when we get into June, where we're at. Guy, do you know how much we spent so far on it this year?
Uh, it looks like we're gonna be very close to the $18,000 mark.
Okay.
We're probably gonna be over.
In June, you mean?
Yes, by the end of June, we are likely to be over the $18,000, but probably not by a lot.
Okay, so, okay, good. So at least we're not messing with the budget, which makes me happy. But another thing is, uh, Shelby's, uh, brought up an important point, was a major reason why I brought it up in 2019, about being, and Gwen did too, about it being the only service that we offer as, for our taxes, and especially the people that have an issue with it. But I do want to say, and responsible what Shelby was saying about the ease of being able to do it with Witten Solid Waste. If you're not, if you're just one person, and you're just taking a little bit of recyclables down, recyclable, you can maintain social distancing very easy down there. It's not, it's not a big deal. Unless, of course, you have a disability, then that's an entirely different situation. Okay, that's saying that. Now, the one other issue I have is that I'm really sick of Guy having to clean all this up. And I think we, we should work this out. Guy's got enough to do. And I don't think he should... And I don't think he should be doing it. I really don't. He does it because he's being a good guy. I got that. But I don't think it's fair. That's where I'm at with it. So I think we should get somebody for $25 a week or something, go over there and clean it up or whatever we gotta do. I mean, if I pay Dave Solesko a week, like, excuse me, Dave Solesko $15 an hour to do coverage. And I think we can get somebody for $25 or something. Especially now where, what is it, $50,000 Vermonters are out of work. And then we get somebody to come over there for a little non-own-out money and keep it clean and let Guy be the town clerk, not the janitor. I got a real problem with that. Lastly, I think lastly, is I think it's to be determined whether this excessive waste is causing a health hazard. Now, this is what I'm gonna get Gwen and Guy, and I want their opinion, what they think. And that's my only loophole to getting rid of this, this vote back in March, which I know I'm not gonna get rid of. They even always pass by one vote. And like Joseph said, next year, we're gonna have to redo it. But I think we gotta do a better job of controlling the issue. Yes, there are the issues about dumping the stuff. If there's nobody, if we don't have a dumpster there, we beat that on as an item last year and the year before. So, I guess I said semi-spiel, keep in the budget. Get somebody to replace Guy for cleaning up the mess up. It's not right. And, okay, and see what you think about it being a health hazard with this all excessive. If this continues, that, that picture that you sent Guy, set me off like a rocket. I mean...
It happened the whole time.
H and U are the other two letters.
That's not the only one.
And I don't care if there's a virus. I don't care if they're cleaning out their attics. I do care if they don't care. And I think we have to consider, well, there's a health hazard and everything else I had to say.
Okay. All right, I mean, I'll be brief and just say I generally echo most of the sentiments by pretty much everybody other than Bruce. Yeah, well, no, no, I mean, I can understand, I can understand your point, Bruce. But I, I mean, I think I, like Joseph and Shelby both said, whether it's, I think greater health risks would be created by not having the bins there than by having them there. But I guess my, the, the main thing I want to circle back to is, you know, your, your idea of hiring someone else to clean up the area. I mean, I'm gonna put this on Guy because Guy is the one who is bearing the brunt of this. And say, Guy, do you want us to find someone to do this rather than you?
Thank you, Guy.
You know, to be honest with you, I don't mind doing it. I keep, you know, keep in front of it. I stay in. Every so often, for whatever reasons, it seems like there's a, all of a sudden, a big fill. And people, and you know, some of them are older people that maybe they can't reach into there. But Saturday, that was a little frustrating. And it doesn't happen every day, only because we are monitoring the, the bins to a point where, you know, I only have to give them one day's notice and I can anticipate almost what the next day's needs are gonna be. So it doesn't happen all the time, but when it does happen, it's frustrating as hell.
Right. And I know we've discussed this before, and I'll bring it up again, and maybe Gwen will echo me on this. Is it, know that we do, we have budgeted $500 or $600 bucks or something like that for trash removal. So we always do have the ability to get someone else involved for big things or whatever. And I guess I would just say, from my standpoint, Guy, know that that is always an option. And that I appreciate that you do this, but know that we, none of us expect that you are always going to be able to do this.
Well, he doesn't, because like he explained to me, you guys live opposite directions. You don't go by the dumpster every day. We go by the dumpster every day. So that's one of the reasons he noticed it probably more than anybody else. But it should be up to him if he wants to do it or not, then I'll get off his back too.
No, the bottom line, if it's just cans and strung, yeah, it's a can.
But I really am wrong with you doing it.
Hang on a second, Bruce. Bruce, hang on.
It's your call.
Guy wanted to say something.
I guess I don't mind doing it as long as it's just, you know, it doesn't happen all the time. But if we get to a point where people stop dumping couches and other things, then it's gonna become an issue.
Like this time where his play toy, big, you know, kids' play toys.
So we'll just do business as usual. And if it gets out of control, I'll bring it up to the select board. And by the same token, all of you, when you go to the recycling, if you see some stuff on the ground, don't be afraid to pick it up. That would help.
Right. And I, yeah, and I would, I'll echo what Shelby said, that I, I do think a lot of the increase is because more people are at home and they're either cleaning out their attics or their garages and finding recyclable things. Or they're just eating more at home and recycling more food containers and things as opposed to going out where that material never ends up coming to us. So I think...
And then I'm going to work and throwing in the bins and work recycling. Like everything is, other things are...
I used, I used to do that. But I don't do that anymore. Praise God.
Okay, any, any last thoughts on this for the moment?
No.
From anyone?
Well, I guess, I'm all set, I guess.
Okay, so we'll, that dovetails nicely into Mr. Tanza, your town clerk report.
We have approximately 13 dogs left to be registered. Five of them are with one single problem area on, not Turtle Drive, on Pappus Lane.
On Pappus Lane.
And Dotson, and she's following that up. So we've done pretty good. The few that we have left, we've sent letters, we've sent emails, we've done everything humanly possible. At the end of the month, on May, I will submit a letter to the select board showing who's not in compliance. The select board, in fact, will give that to the animal control officer, and she will be knocking on doors. And quite honestly, if I think, you know, 120 people have went out of their way to have their dogs registered, if the five or six that don't want to do it, I think they should be subject to the penalty. And that's it.
Can you send, can you send us the list of who's left? Because maybe if we know people on the list, we can encourage them, because it is a crazy time. But maybe like up here, our neighbor reaching out right now, like push them over there.
All right, yeah, I can, what I do is I send DOT, I scan it and send it to DOT. So I can all put you on the same email.
Yeah.
And then you can download it or do whatever you want to do with it. And you'll see who doesn't have a list, who isn't in compliance. And maybe you can just, you know, push them along a little bit and tell them that it's important because it's not only for the health of the dog, it's also for the safety of the people in town, if God forbid they get bit. So, and then if little Fifi wants to go for a walk, we can retrieve her dog and bring it back to the rightful owner. So that's a good thing. Then the other thing like we talked about before is the voting. Right now, it's scheduled for June 10th. I'm still waiting for the governor's directive, and I'll just keep you posted with that. But all the information that we, that we need to know about is on our website. We have a tiny little website, but let me tell you, it's well, well done and it's well up to date. So the answers are there. And that's about it.
Okay. Thanks, Guy.
The higher governor opens up.
Sorry, sorry, Bruce.
If the governor opens up, if he doesn't extend the stay-at-home order, I'd be really surprised. I know he's opening up a little bit, but I'd be really surprised, because this isn't over. It's not gonna be over for quite a while.
Okay, moving on, just to highways and roads, Mark isn't with us, but I did talk to him yesterday. He's come in and signed off on some excess weight permit stuff that was lingering. He's basically been grading, grading roads. So that's, that's the deal pretty much. He's just smoothing out roads when we have some weather and slowly making his way around to all of the dirt roads and making them as good as he can make them.
Are we on target for the grass cutting? Is that...
Yes, so the, yeah, so I guess I should add, so we have, we got the contract for the over-the-rail mower. And between Sarah and I, we got the certificate of insurance. And I've sent all of the contract and the certificate of insurance back to the rental place. So we're locked in for mid-June, for the weekend, or mid-July rather, for Mark to get that mower, to do the roadside mower. Okay, now moving on to communications. The only real email of note, I thought, was we got an email yesterday. I think it went to everybody from Chris Hunt at V-Trans about the updates on construction activities for municipal grant projects. I sent that along to Chris Hampany at the Regional Commission, who is acting as our project manager on the Salt Sand Chet project, just to make sure he had seen it. I also sent it to Archie and Mark. It doesn't, there isn't really anything about it that applies to anything we have going on right now. But, and it remains to be seen when some of this stuff might get lifted by the governor. But everybody who should know about it now knows about it in the event any of it were to apply to us. But obviously, as we've discussed before, nothing is, nothing other than state permitting is in process as far as the Salt and Sand Chet project is concerned at this point. So that was the only real email that I think was of substance. And then as far as physical mail, bless you. As far as physical mail, we've received a letter from the State of Vermont Department of Forests, Parks and Recreation about approving or rejecting the reappointment of Lester Ring as firewarden. This is something we need to do by June 19th. Just to be polite to Lester, I will give him a call and make sure he's still okay with doing that, in which case we'll, we will vote on that at the next meeting or the meeting after.
And see if Mike, why not also, is his deputy also?
Yeah. Yeah, but they don't, I didn't know that they technically have a, oh no, there is a separate, sorry, there's a separate form for the deputy. Yeah, so I guess, right, so I can reach out to Mike to see if he's still okay with being, doing the deputy as well. So that's really it as far as mail is concerned.
Someone's counting their money. Is Bruce counting his money on you?
Yeah, I guess. Guess that's where it is.
You playing hollow, Bruce?
Yeah. Are you playing connect four?
You wouldn't believe, you could hear me, Joseph.
No, we don't hear you.
It's so loud.
We don't hear you.
Am I loud? You know what I'm doing?
No.
You'll never guess.
Eating.
I have a big table here with all my hardware laid out on it, and I'm sorting it. I multitask.
Bruce, I don't think it's a priority to your...
Yeah, it doesn't seem that way.
Oh, Shelby, you hurt my feelings. Come on, you know better than that. All right, I'll cut you out.
All right, so moving on to, moving on to the payers. First off, we'll do the payroll warrant. I'll just note that I have already signed this. I signed it last week when it was processed. Everyone should have received the Excel file from Sarah a few days, a few days, or I guess on the 29th when she did it. I'll go around. Gwen, have you reviewed the pay warrants? And do you have any questions about it? Shelby, have you reviewed the pay warrants? And do you have any questions about it?
Um, it's wait, so payroll or the payroll?
The payroll warrant.
Okay, good enough.
Joseph, do you have?
What is it, enough?
Joseph, do you have any questions about the payroll warrant?
No.
Bruce, any questions about the payroll warrant?
No, I'm glad we got those.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve Payroll Warrant 2020-44 dated April 29th, 2020, in the amount of $1,159.02. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Payroll Warrant 2020-44 dated April 29th, 2020, in the amount of $1,159.02, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? The payroll warrant is approved. Now we'll move on to the Accounts Payable Warrant. I'll go around. Gwen, have you reviewed the Accounts Payable Warrant?
Yes.
And do you have any questions about it?
No.
Shelby, do you have any questions on the Accounts Payable Warrant? So that's the PDF that I sent earlier today.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious, why is there, what are the recycling terms under radical salvage and under Triple T trucking?
So the way they, the way they always work is the trucking fees are always under Triple T, but the processing of the material is actually a separate entity, which is radical salvage.
Okay, I think it was something like that, but I'm just, just curious. Okay, cool, but that's my own thing.
Okay. Joseph, any questions about the Accounts Payable Warrant?
No.
Bruce, any questions about the Accounts Payable Warrant?
No, nobody.
Okay. Then I would like to make a motion that we approve Accounts Payable Warrant 2020-45 dated May 5th, 2020, in the amount of $5,599.85. Is there a second?
Seconded again.
Seconded by Gwen. She beat you to it, Bruce. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Accounts Payable Warrant 2020-45 dated May 5th, 2020, in the amount of $5,599.85, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Then the Accounts Payable Warrant is also approved. Brings us down to setting the agenda for next time. Like I mentioned, we'll, we'll discuss the financial and tax status again. We'll have Sarah and hopefully Samara with us for that.
And I may have some new voting information.
Might be, okay, so we'll put on school vote.
It's a school budget vote.
School budget vote. Bruce, do you want a little time on the Sunny Lane or on Suzie's Little Peanuts, or?
More of Suzie.
Flashback.
Yeah, I thought it won't be much, but...
SLP updates.
Other than that, we're gonna, we need to discuss what we're, if we are okay that we pay, everybody's paid their taxes, we should reconsider, of course, the windows being painted and of course, the paving. We should start thinking about that.
I'd say yes, I think under your, under your SLP update, it makes sense to...
Keep the windows.
Talk again about the windows and just sort of maybe see where we're at. I personally still think May 20th is gonna be premature to draw any conclusions about the pavement. I think, I think we should wait into June on that.
Everybody's in the same group, you know.
Have you talked, what do you think, Guy? Have you talked to Archie about it, Dave, at all?
I have. I mean, I talked to him a while ago about it when I, when we discussed that we were gonna table considering it until we knew what situation we were in and the world was in later in the year.
What did he say?
I mean, I think he was in agreement with that, that there, you know.
Okay.
And I think his, I think, I think I can speak for both Mark and Archie in that I think they both think it would be very, very good if we could get that section paved this year. But I don't think either of them would describe that as an absolute necessity. So...
We have, we have a point right now where the price of oil is low, then we'll stay that way. So what else is we can... So, what else should we consider down the road a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, you know, within, like we say, we'll, you know, once, we'll, hopefully, in a couple of weeks, we'll know more about what the state of the initial round of the state home order may be. We'll have hopefully a better idea of where we are tax-wise. But realize that we very well will come into May 20th just knowing what we haven't received as far as taxes are concerned, which doesn't, doesn't tell us when we might ever get those taxes, you know. So, it, it still is very likely that we'll be in an uncertain financial situation even at that point.
No, that, but, uh, if I could just add, I think if the small paving projects similar to what we have in mind, are probably gonna be pushed to the backside because, uh, most of these paving companies have not been able to do anything yet and they have big projects that they have to do. So, they've already lost probably six weeks of paving time already. So, I'm not sure where we're gonna be with that.
Uh-huh. Can I get it?
Um, other, other, um, other thoughts on agenda items for next time? Gwen, is there anything else you can think of at the moment? Shelby, any other agenda items you can think of at the moment?
Um, I was just wondering, uh, maybe if we could put on the agenda, considering sending out, um, a survey to the town to get an idea of how impacted our population is that by this whole thing? And maybe get some ideas of what they might be needing most coming, you know, as we move through this, um, to see if there's any support that we could be providing. Because if there's...
Is it a word service, Shelby?
What service?
As a what service, you said?
I don't think I, did I use the word service?
I thought you did.
Survey.
Survey.
No big deal.
No big deal.
A survey, yeah, putting on a survey to see how, how our population, how, how the townspeople have been affected by this, get gauge how effective we've been or, you know, and, and maybe get an idea for what, not necessarily financial resources, but what may be resources and support they might be looking for moving forward from the town if possible. Um, because it hasn't been a lot of work, a lot to be waiting and it's kind of all we can do. But I think it's also because we don't really know what people might be needing or looking for. So, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, we can put on an item to talk about that.
And I can kind of put a sample survey or something until it's, uh, actually look at something tangible.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great. Uh, anything, any other ideas, agenda items, Shelby?
Yep.
Joseph, any other agenda items you can think of at the moment?
No.
Bruce, how about you?
Me?
Yeah, any other agenda items?
No, I just wanted to make a very, very fast comment. I've been watching this thing about COVID every day and what we've been doing so far, just understand, say that, state that, that Athens, Townsend, Newfane, and Dover all have one to five cases. We've had none. Dumberson's had none and Westminster has, has had none. So, I don't know, it has nothing to do with agenda, but I just wanted to bring it up and save it for us and hopefully we stay that way.
That is a very good point. Okay, uh, then I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Okay.
Bruce, Bruce gets that one. Okay, all those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, then we are adjourned at 7:44.